I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting into order and ask to stand for political allegiance if possible.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This morning, I can ask for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
No, I'll second it.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated June 23rd, 2021.
Move different.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval for claims for payment dated June 30th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the June 30th, 2021 claims for payment.
No, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Emergency management coordinator Creighton didn't have anything for his update this morning. Engineer Raw reports that he is gone today and Bruce and Joe are out on a paving project. He didn't have anything at this point. He just has the fuel bids later in the agenda that will be opened. Next item I have, Emily Schwickerath from Representative Feenstra's office is here. Come on down, Emily.
Hi, my name is Emily Schwickerath and I am Congressman Randy Feenstra's district director. Just wanted to come today and introduce myself to all of you and let you know our office is always here as a resource or to help in any way, whether it be writing a letter of support for a grant you might be applying for or helping with the federal agencies doling out these next round of COVID dollars. Please don't hesitate to reach out. And then, just so you know, the congressman serves on the Agriculture Committee, Budget Committee, and Science Space and Technology Committee. He's really focused on biofuels and creating transparency in the cattle market right now, but by no means are those his only priorities either. So feel free to reach out to us anytime. I live in Ames, so it's a really easy drive to come over and meet in person as well at any time. So thank you guys so much.
Will you be here after the meeting?
I, for a little bit, yes.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
Cards, contacts.
I'll hand them out.
Okay.
All right. Next item I have is public comments. Michael, if you want to... I'm gonna have you wait, Michael. We'll do public comments here in person first and then we'll open the line. So any public comments here in the room? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Pauline.
Yeah, I have a few on the motion to revise and clarify courthouse entry and then the motion to return of in-person public attendance at meetings and then the resolution on direct report of misconduct.
Okay. So do you have questions or do you want to comment on it?
Questions and then maybe comments later.
What's the question then?
I guess basically what do you mean by putting those on the agenda?
Okay.
What's your interpretation of it and then I guess go from there.
Okay, so the motion to revise the courthouse policy, Attorney Meyer. Let me pull this up here. So in the document, the suggestion of adding courthouse security will request the following information from the public before entry: name, designation within the courthouse, and phone number. Per Iowa Department of Public Health guidelines, entry will be denied for failing to provide name and destination within courthouse. Entry will not be denied for failing to provide a phone number. A phone number is requested for the public convenience in order to notify the individual when they may enter and for public health contact tracing. So that's the addendum.
Well, that's the current policy.
Correct, right. That's the... what we have at the moment. So...
So what's gonna be the new policy on that?
Yeah. With the changes that we're making with, you know, coming back, opening to the public and how the departments wanted to allow people to come in and we're using, whether we're using tags or not, I talked to Quaker Security about what would maybe make more sense for that particular paragraph about what we're expecting them to do at the front of the courthouse. And what I, after that conversation, I'm proposing that we modify that paragraph number 10 that you just read to simply state courthouse security may request the following information from the public before entry: name, destination within courthouse, phone number. So it's a may rather than shall. And that gives them some flexibility if the departments, you know, as they work with the Quaker Security, they may desire more or less information from time to time. So it's kind of letting them have some discretion or flexibility there. And then it says courthouse security may limit/regulate entry for social distancing purposes as directed by department heads. So again, it gives them a little more flexibility. Right now, I think we're probably... That paragraph 10 is probably more restrictive and not required at this point. So I'm just kind of asking to pare it down a little bit to give some more flexibility.
Okay. Does that answer the question, Pauline?
I guess, but I see now you've got like, you know, like the door locked, like she has... Or whoever's there, the guard has a little...
That's always been that way. I have to, I have to use that.
I don't remember that before. I just remember going through the door. I don't remember the door always being locked and she letting us in.
No, it's always been that way.
And then on your next item, I'll skip down to the resolution. Just going to go back here, open the document. The resolution on direct... Attorney Mike Galloway provided us legal guidance that the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors shall have the authority and investigate allegations of misconduct and issue corrective action or actions to employees that direct, that report directly to the Board of Supervisors. The chairperson may not terminate an employee unless approved by a majority of the board. So it's just a human resources law matter that our attorney at Ayers &amp; Cooney made the suggestion of consideration amongst the board today.
Okay, so you're talking about the misconduct
Correct.
Then of employees?
Yep.
Just employees that report to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
And what was the other item, Pauline?
In-person public attendance at meetings.
So we utilized our engineering technician, Joe Donald, from the engineer's office, and they did some measuring in the room. And so he was able to come up with a schematic and I'll provide that to Justin or Matt. I'm not sure who's covering the meeting and Elaine today. But with his suggestion or his calculations and then using the CDC suggestions, the room, you know, is adequate for what we have here in the room today. So it would just be adopting the drawings and going by this kind of attendance room occupancy.
Okay, but now according to the CDC, those of us that are vaccinated, we don't have to worry about that. Like we can sit closer together or be closer together, those of us that have had the vaccine.
Right, and that's, that's at your leisure, but there's still the guidance of between fire code and between public health directive is 15 square foot per person. So in one side of the room, while using proper exit paths, there are 72 square feet over on this side of the room. And if you divide that by 15, that equals 4.8 people. So that's how we got that number. And on this side of the room, there are 61 square feet. Divide that by 15, that's just a little over four. So... And then the back area where the IT desk is was its own separate calculation. So that's how we got that area. So at this point, that'll be the consideration.
Question. I thought Thomas said last week that it was seven square feet for fire.
The, these are the calculations. This is what the email I got from him yesterday. So I'm just going off of the most current information I got from him.
From Thomas?
Thomas.
Okay, but if more people want to come to these meetings, then shouldn't you guys provide a larger space then for us to hold these meetings?
No, I think, I think it was mentioned at the last, when we last discussed it, that there would be chairs or we could put chairs in the hallway.
We can put chairs in the hallway and we're still offering Zoom. So I'm not picking on Grundy County by any means. And we're not Grundy County, but their facilities are much smaller and they don't even provide Zoom as an alternative. So it's, you know, I don't think at this point, while we've invested the time and money in the technology to offer by Zoom, we've allowed for, I've consulted with Randy Evans from the Iowa Freedom of Information Council for a county the size of Hardin County with the resources that Hardin County has, we've done more than county's double, triple, quadruple our size in accommodating Iowa Code Chapter 21. So I think I'll just leave it at that for today. So other public comment. Michael, can you open up the other line?
Julie Dunn. So if you have expectations of a larger crowd for a specific topic you'll be discussing or agenda thing, will you provide a bigger space? Because sometimes people just want to be there in person.
Yes. If we were to have a large scale hearing, like they've utilized the EOC building for jury selections and those type of events, we could definitely coordinate with our IT department and our facilities and do our best to accommodate larger groups. But I can tell you, having met over in the EOC building, that the acoustics just aren't very accommodating for people in person or online. They've gotten much better, but it's still hard to hear over there when you get a large crowd.
Sometimes it has been hard previously to hear via Zoom even, but like public, public hearings on certain topics will require, I believe, a bigger space. But deal with those when you come to them. I just want to remind remind you and Quaker Security that people who come to the courthouse are adults doing business. And sometimes they don't want to share their business. And I hope that they would respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Additional public comment. Seeing none. Chris Wheaton, I see you're on. And so when it comes to your item on the agenda, I'll have Michael unmute you, okay? All right. The next item I have is motion to revise or clarify the courthouse entry policy. I would accept the motion with Attorney Meyer's suggestions of utilizing the word "may" rather than "shall."
Like motion to approve the in-person public attendance at meetings policy.
Ooh, that's the next one.
Oh, wait.
The clarified courthouse entry policy.
Oh, all right. So, okay, so I will make a motion to approve the clarified courthouse entry policy.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item for consideration is action on the return to in-person public attendance at meetings. So utilizing the diet, the county engineers' staff diagrams and the layout today, I think it works fairly well. I would accept the motion to adopt the seating chart as we have it set up today.
Make a motion to approve the seating chart as recommended by the county engineer's office measurements for our public attendance at meetings.
I will second that.
Okay, discussion?
It was also recommended by Thomas.
Thomas, yes.
Yes.
And I do want to...
And Jody.
And Jody. I want to make note that if we did have larger scale public hearings that we would accommodate and try to get to a facility that has good acoustics, that's readily available, ADA compliant, all those considerations. So, yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, if you could unmute Chris Wheaton, please. I have for consideration and application for the Iowa State Recreational Trails Grant. Chris, a yield for?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for the time this morning, board, and appreciate the opportunity to come before you again as the Chair of the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail Board and presenting the application for a 2021 State Recreation Trail app. Ask, the application would be for the amount of $300,000 from the State Recreation Trails program. This would be used towards matching and in conjunction with the CARES Act funds that were the federal funds project of $1 million that we had applied for that came before you a few weeks ago. This would be an extension of the paved trail from Highway 175 in Eldora to 260th Street in Hardin County, just south. 260th Street is the county, the road that goes in front of United Suppliers for folks to, from a logistics standpoint. So an estimated two, two-plus miles of paved trail if the applications were accepted and awarded to us. The uniqueness of both of these, I know I missed, I was not able to attend the CARES Act application or presentation, but that million dollars came out of the special pool and did not have some of the same matching restrictions that a lot of the other federal and state funds have. There was not a match requirement and it was for shovel-ready projects. And however, to cover engineering costs and any overages, as we know, in terms of construction costs, they have gone up. And so we wanted to make sure we were covering things of a project of that nature if we were awarded that CARES Act. And so we are asking, we're putting this application in for the State Rec Trail Program to cover engineering and any overages for that 300,000, even though there's not a match requirement on the, on the other $1 million application. There would be a match requirement on the 300,000 of roughly $60,000, but State Rec Trail grants can be matched with the federal rec trails. So there'd be, in this instance, no out-of-pocket match needed by, by our board to, to complete a project of this nature. So open the, yeah, any other questions or comments that I can answer at this time?
Chris, you know my question already.
No, we're not restricted in any way that, 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 as before. So, yes.
Okay.
My question I ask every time is when we apply for grants, sometimes they put restrictions on that are for walking bicycle only. I am not in favor of any grants like that that would restrict us for 20 years on a plan. This grant could be used for bicycling, walking, horses, ATVs, golf carts. It could be used for any of that, but his commission chooses to just stay with the walking trail and how they, and bicycles, how they, they are running it.
Well, and then addition to that is, you know, the, the, the other, I guess, motorized element that we are highly considering here and, and, you know, will need to address once we get the trail completed. Specifically, the trail that will be completed, you know, according to timelines, by next year from Eldora to Steamboat is opening that in the winter months to snowmobiles and having that accessible to motorized vehicles there too. Something we continue to talk about and will address again, once we get, you know, put that, put a good safety plan in place would be more leaning towards some sort of, you know, motorized element for those that aren't physically able to use it in a walking, biking manner. You know, we've seen, we've seen elements of golf carts and other things that have been able to be used similarly in other trails. But it's about, there's a lot of logistics around that and speed elements that we need to focus on when we, when we know how, how that trail usage is going to look. So, so yes, there are some elements that and some user groups that right now would be restricted from using this. And that's just more of a safety aspect that could always be addressed or considered down the road as, as needs or, or, you know, those changes would take place. So.
Go ahead, Donna.
Would that include the use of motorized wheelchairs?
That's, those are the elements that we are looking to incorporate in the current trail is to help our users, you know, that aren't physically able to, you know, do that in, you know, in a walking or, or, or bike way to use some sort of motorized element, even motorized bicycles, you know. I think that's an element that needs to be looked at too. And there's a lot of folks that have in a motorized assist bicycle that isn't necessarily, you know, doesn't get, it doesn't, isn't considered a motorcycle or a moped or something like that. But yeah, I think, I think those would be, those are the user groups we want to have to be out and enjoy. I think from a physical aspect and a mental health aspect, there's, there's definitely, you know, this is a, this would be a benefit to them to be able to enjoy this, this asset that we're going to be able to provide.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Lance, anything else? Renee?
Yep.
Okay, I'd accept a motion to approve the application.
Motion to approve the application for the Iowa State Rec Trails Grant for the Rivers, Rivers Edge Trail.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your time this morning.
Yep, thank you all. Have a happy Fourth of July, everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
Donna, you're up.
I just think there needs to be a further discussion on mowing. We have had situations here, more than one. And as you have said, there's nothing you can do. You can't enforce it. Therefore, there are no consequences. Which basically means people don't have to even follow state rules. And currently, if somebody doesn't even have a permit, there's nothing that can be done about it. It's rules that basically mean nothing. And I think we need to have a discussion on that. People use the hay in their ditch for their livestock. People depend on the hay in their ditch for their livestock. And if somebody else comes along and mows and bales, they don't have access to that. I have even heard that people are stealing other people's bales. We have to remember, this is a drought, moderate. But from looking at national weather this morning, it doesn't look like it's going to get any better. So rather than just wait until something serious happens, I think there needs to be a discussion on what can the county do? And I'd like to know your thoughts.
I'll go first. Okay. I'm glad you came in today. I've had several other constituents call.
Oh, so have I.
And the one particular issue that I think comes up is that the ditches have, the ownership of ditches are unique. They're right-of-way. Some people mow them and groom them like a lawn. Some people, you know, mow others and utilize what the county's right-of-way is, assuming that that's their forage area. So when I, when you say their ditch, does that mean the mile, you know, right in front, their, the property right in front of their house? Or is that the property that runs the section of near their house?
According to the state and according to your own county engineer. Property lines run to the middle of the road, for example, on our Rebel Road. But the county has easement.
Right.
And the landowner has the right to do what they, what they want with the ditch.
Right.
Not, not necessarily true on that statement.
According to the state.
Well, if, if a county highway used to be a state highway, I'll use S-55 going to Providence. The state has purchased that ground. It is not an easement.
State-owned ground runs under a whole different animal.
Now, listen. It was a state road. It then transferred to a county road. Therefore, when it transferred to the county road, the ownership of the road transferred to the county. That did not transfer to the landowner to the middle of the road. The ditches belong to the county on those roads. That's why I said that statement wasn't all true. In your case, in front of your place, you paid to the center of the road. You owned to the center of the road, county has easement.
And that's basically what I said.
But not on all county roads.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. But, so when one constituent called and said, hey, I mow all, all these miles of ditch and I mow it, rake it, bail it, he's, he's getting permission from all those people.
Not necessarily. I heard three or four times that they didn't.
In this case, Nick Shute told me that that's the case. So he...
I don't know what Nick said.
Right, but I'm telling you what Nick said. So my, my thing is, is just because you mow it doesn't mean it belongs to you. Doesn't mean it's your area to bail. Just because you bail it doesn't mean it's yours. And Nick and I had the other discussion that, you know, I think Nick's a very responsible person when it comes to this in the permitting and walking the ditch to make sure there's no pop cans and wire and stuff that, you know, that free bail's great until it kills your livestock because it just...
Right.
Well, or it eats a pop can or a piece of wire. So, so assuming that whatever you mow becomes yours isn't always true. And that's where, and I agree with you, forage and hay is a very hot commodity. I follow the Manchester area hay market auction. I follow the union one. It is very expensive and it is people's lives and livelihood trying to feed their livestock. But at some point, people have to realize just because they mow it, it doesn't automatically become theirs as well. So the respect of, you know, who's it actually is, is one item that we have to look at as well. And in talking to a couple of people, they're like, just do away with ditch mowing so it can't become a problem at all. Just get rid of it, be done. If we can't get along, then be done with it.
Or there are other alternatives.
And I appreciate a solution. What, what would your ideal solution be then?
Well, like I said, if, if, if the drought, this drought continues, hay prices are going to go up and hay bales are going to become more difficult to find. And as you said, there's nothing you can do. There are no consequences. There's no enforcement for whatever rules. for whatever rules might currently be there, so they may as well not even be there. On the other hand, you could take what the state says, turn it into a resolution for the county because you're not taking anything away, which you can't do, and pass it as a resolution, complete with consequences.
Okay. And, and consequences, um, mean enforcement. So when it comes to enforcement, what's your solution for the enforcement part of it then?
Well, first of all, you could start with the application.
Okay.
And make certain that people who do request permits actually have landowners' signatures. Because I have heard through four cases where, well, nobody asked me.
Okay. So one of the questions I have, Donna, and this isn't, I'm not in, trying to interrogate, but I don't get any of the questions that you get. They're not coming to, are they coming to you, Lance? I don't know why they're not coming to myself. So I can confer with the sheriff if somebody's stealing something. If there's property infringements, why we're not talking to, you know, the county attorney? So these complaints, I'm not sure why the complaint department is going to you and not to me. And so.
I could answer that question, but the answer would be insulting to all three of you.
Okay.
Now, there is another alternative. Um, once you tell somebody to get off your land, if they don't do it, then it becomes a situation for the sheriff. It's trespassing.
Your land is county right of way?
According to the state and according to your own county engineer.
Public right of way.
For example, on my road, it goes to the middle of the road.
But it's public right of way.
The ditch I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
That's why they allow road hunting.
And according to the state, once you tell somebody, you don't do that, this is mine, and they don't leave, the state told me that is trespassing. And if they mow it so it can't be baled, that is, wait a minute, damage of an asset, your asset.
Which is a civil matter, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Trespassing is not. Trust me, I've gone rounds about trespassing.
But a ditch is a public right of way.
But you have rights to that ditch in front of your property, according to the state.
Uh huh. And you can sue, and you can sue civilly. But they still have a right to be on it. It's public right of way. The sheriff's here, the attorney's here. I could be wrong. They can correct me.
Somebody's road hunting, you don't have the authority to, because you own the land adjacent to that ditch, to kick them out of that ditch.
Yeah.
Take what you want, but you're wrong.
Now, wait a minute. Isn't road hunting illegal?
No.
No.
You can't have a gun and ride in the, and ride in your vehicle and shoot from your vehicle.
No, I said road hunting. That would be getting out of your vehicle and walking the ditches perfectly illegal. Times that they think about being in your vehicle with a gun.
And I have all, I've had experience. It doesn't matter how many no, no trespassing signs you have. Evidently, there are people in the state of Iowa who can't read. And they come anyway.
They choose not to.
I would hope they were kinder than that and simply illiterate. But what I was told by the state is if somebody is in your ditch, and trust me, my ditches are not. I'd never have to worry about that. I'd like to see him get a big mower in my ditch. But according to what I was told by the state, if somebody is mowing your ditch and you tell them to leave, that is then trespassing.
We're not going to arrest them. Well, they're not, Daryl, prosecute, I think would be, it was to speak to you.
I think it's public right of way.
Well, then maybe I need to call a person at the state back and say, I'm sorry, my county disagrees with you.
Who'd you talk to at the state?
Do I say names, Lance?
It, it makes a difference if you're, if they're giving you a quote on a law, they don't even have a legal background, don't they? Or maybe you would like to contact them after the meeting with the name, so then they can verify and they can explain. Or you can go back to them and they can call back to the county attorney or the sheriff.
I can go back and talk to them. That's no problem. But, uh, with this drought, let's get back to the flush of this. With this drought, which according to National Weather Service is expanding, the extremely harsh drought in the Northwest has now made its way to South Dakota. And with no sign of stopping or slowing down, I think it might be a good idea for this board to consider doing something in advance rather than waiting for problems. Little foresight?
The, uh, it's a, it's a lot of an answer, but, uh, so I've been in contact with, uh, Daryl, county attorney. What ticket can you cite? What's a ticket that can be cited?
There isn't one.
You got a law with no citation.
And.
Well, we can't, and, cause the, the statute says no mowing before July 15th. So we cannot authorize people to break the law.
Actually, that's not a law. That's an agreement with DNR. With the IDOT. Yeah. And I asked about that. Well, yeah, that's just an agreement. That's why it has no teeth. It's just an agreement.
Well, they made it a law.
With no penalties, with no consequences.
So, uh.
And all I'm saying is.
Mowing on, mowing on interstate primary highway secondary roads. Exceptions to their law.
There are nine of them.
Yep. Within two hundred yards of an inhabited dwelling. On right of ways within one mile of corporate limits of city. To promote native species vegetation or other long-lived adaptable vegetation. To establish control of damaging insect population, noxious weeds and invasive plant species for visibility and safety reasons. That, that covers a lot right there. Within rest areas, waste stations, wayside parks within 50 feet of drainage tile or in tile intake for access to mailbox or for other accessible purposes. On right of ways adjacent to agricultural demonstration or research plots. They leave pretty wide open.
Yeah. And on the same token, it doesn't say anything about exception for testing or beautification.
That would be agricultural demonstration or research plot.
No. I asked about that. Nope. That's not what that means. But there's going to be more of this going on. And it might not be a bad idea to at least make an attempt to do something in advance.
The attempt, the attempt was made prior. Um, we do have a right working, uh, to work in the right of way. Application to work in the right of way. It's, I don't know how old, but it was tight. If that tells you anything. Been around way back when you were in there. Um, since then, we've had another one adopted to bail in the right of way. I don't like that one, to be honest with you. I like the DOTs.
Yeah.
DOT covers about everything you ask for, which would mean, require that you would need annual acceptance of every adjacent landowner.
I agree, but that's not happening. But then who cares? There's no teeth to it. There's nothing you can do. You can't enforce it.
And they also claim with the July 15th, and you're right, they don't, they don't enforce it.
So.
They made a law that they don't enforce.
So as a county, when you have a few people taking away from many people.
That's where I like the DOTs to where they would verify each plot.
But if they don't do it, there's no consequences. So why can't the county?
Turns into a civil matter. That's the consequence is a civil matter.
Can I interrupt you? Dave, have you had any reports of any hay bales theft?
No, that I've never.
Well, no, I'm not going to call.
But why wouldn't you? A hay bale at the union hay auction is bringing a hundred dollars. Angela, I'd hate to bring in this, but for your equine, how much is a bail of, of hay cost?
A small bale's going for seven fifty, a large bale's going for a hundred and fifty two dollars.
So i- if you're losing one, two, three, five, 10 bales, why the heck wouldn't you report it to the sheriff? And, and some, I mean, you're not, we're not, this isn't small things. And I agree with you, Donna. Feeding one's livestock is pretty important. So if somebody came out and stole 20 of your small bales, you might have a problem with that and you would probably call the authorities. So why are we?
They might, but if you only steal one or two, oh crap, they did, did it again.
Then that's a choice. Yeah. I, I mean, I know Sheriff McDaniel's very well and I know County Attorney Meyer. They take, take these things serious. If, if it's your life and livelihood, it's your life and livelihood. Please report alleged crimes to the proper authorities. If they're stealing big round bales, there's a very strong likelihood that it could be tracked down. Or somebody saw something.
It turns into something larger.
Yeah. And, and that's.
I agree with you. Don't ask me why people don't do it.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta remember technically that's not hay. That's grass.
But it.
Alfalfa is hay.
Okay. It's forage and it does have a, a value though.
It does have a value, but technically it's not hay. Alfalfa is hay. That's grass.
Yeah.
And so far as that goes, what do you do when somebody's bailing where you should be, have the right to bail? So they don't have a signature on.
Then it's a civil matter. Then you would file a case.
And we all know how well that works.
Your opinion? Yeah, I I, I.
So basically.
Then accept it, Donna. If you don't want to file the complaint, then accept the consequence that you're not, nothing's going to happen, right?
Oh, I agree with you.
Okay.
But if you make it stronger, it might deter. It might deter the creation of the problem. It might deter the conflict. I mean, there was even one farmer who said, well, yeah, I mean, he was, this guy was bailing and cutting and baling in front of my house and I, or in front of my property. And I tried to want to tell him, no, this is, I want to bail this. Well, I have your permission. He said, no, you didn't. He got punched. The guy said he should have.
Yeah. Then they shouldn't. Then Dave, did you get, were you contacted about this?
Men are not going to do that.
We have an application process that they don't even use.
Well, yeah, I agree with you. There's an application process they don't even use. So. You know, and but there's with no consequences to not even getting an application with no consequences for not getting any signatures, for not, for not following the rules.
And then not contacting the sheriff if it's being stolen in front of your house.
If you're punched, assaulted.
Yeah.
Well, well, nobody wants to run to mommy and daddy because he hit me. So that's their own choice.
About a thousand cases, that should otherwise.
Yeah.
I'm, I personally would defer to the county attorney and probably the sheriff on any comments regarding putting any teeth into it. I just don't think that we have the enforcement capability. We don't have, we don't have deputies that patrol the gravel roads.
No, but if an owner sees someone doing it and.
Why aren't we getting those calls now?
Because they don't feel that anything's going to be done.
They're absolutely right.
If they don't call.
You don't call, you're right. Nothing's going to happen.
Right. And if you don't feel that anything will happen because, because your own words, we can't enforce it.
It's not our law.
That's what I'm asking you.
To create a law?
To create a resolution.
But it would have to be ordinance.
Then create an ordinance.
And what teeth would we have when it goes to court?
You could make it a simple misdemeanor.
Okay.
Or like Taylor once suggested a couple of years ago, uh, give them a $500 fine and if and if they don't pay it, it goes on their tax bill. I was, I thought that was a good suggestion.
I was just reading the comment, I think. So you'd like an ordinance provided to put a penalty to it?
Well, I think something needs to be done.
And.
Or at least attempted.
Okay. Well, to say that nothing's been attempted, there is a permit process. I can't say nothing has been attempted.
And if they don't even get a permit, you can't enforce it. So, because it has.
Yep.
There are no consequences. So.
And that's with the state as well.
And we can improve on the state. We just can't.
And most, and most.
Eliminate anything from the state.
Most ditches out there that are being bailed are state or previous state properties. They're the ones that have the nice wide ditch and the grass. There are, there are a few county ditches that you could still do that in, don't get me wrong. But a gravel road's pretty minimal. Somebody's out doing it.
Yeah, like ours.
Roads are too wide, too steep. It would, it's very minimal. Uh, mowing, obviously, if somebody wants to go mow, they can mow. You're talking about bailing only, correct?
No.
Okay. Uh, mowing, a landowner has a right to go mow their property.
Yes. Yes, they do.
And.
But if somebody else decides to do it, oh wow, so what? Who cares? No consequences.
I'll, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. If I wanted to go mow my ditch and somebody beat me to it, I'm happy.
Not if you want that.
That's bailing. That's bailing. I'm talking mowing.
And if you bail it and somebody else mows it, you can't bail it. And you've lost.
But I was just talking mowing. Bailing, bailing is a separate issue. Bailing, if you want that commodity on there, it falls back to the civil matter of somebody stealing your property. And until, until you want to go to that first step, it's tough to go to the second step. Even if we pass an ordinance, you still got to get to that first step to, to call it in.
And if, maybe if people felt that, that there was actually something that could be done, they might have different attitudes.
They could.
So back, back to our programs here for bailing, I like what the state has, whether it's bailing, mowing or anything.
Then incorporate it.
I tried to years ago.
Lance, would you like to add to?
With that one.
Would you like to see if we can rebrand the DOT application and, and look at adopting that in coming weeks?
I would like that, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I would like to have it on.
Policy? Which is basically useless or as ordinance?
I, I think starting as a policy, Donna, because I do believe that's a more comprehensive application.
The state application is wonderful.
Right.
It even lists the rules if anybody bothered to read them.
Yep. And Lance, would you like to continue the dialogue with Attorney Meyer to see what is feasible, what would hold up in court, what wouldn't and determine if an ordinance with some type of penalty would be feasible going forward?
Okay.
Okay.
We currently have a few permits that are out there right now. At any given point, if I could, if we could have this. At any given point, if I could, if we could have this on the next week's agenda. What do you want to do with the old ones? Revoke them and have them reapply?
There's no reason to make it retroactive, as long as they follow the rules.
Well, the rules changed. So do you revoke them or do you let them go? I can give you this one right here. They're on an old county or an old state highway for about three or four miles. They've been approved, it's okay. County owns the property. Or should, should we go to this one where they have to turn around and have a written signature from every adjacent landowner and reapply?
I say at this point, uh, it probably, from what Donna's saying, is people aren't respecting other people's property and their rights, so let's make them get the signatures.
So revoke the current ones and have them go back for signatures.
Yeah, sounds like that.
With a new policy that.
That was his suggestion, not mine.
That would, that would give a week.
I, I understand, but it sounds like the bigger part of the human conflict is people failing to effectively communicate. If, if you want that hundred and twenty-five dollar bail of grass or six of them or eight of them, then you'll go and get two signatures or six signatures.
Well, I've signed one over here.
I, I would hesitate to dishonor those permits that were given in good faith that they're relying on.
I would take your legal console into consideration.
If you ever make any change of perspective.
Grandfather the ones that are current today. Yeah, I.
Okay.
I'm willing to have that discussion, but I agree that the signatures are a very big part of that.
Part of the state one, yeah.
Yeah, but if that would be adopted, you know, on the county level, then I think it would be an integral part, Donna.
And I would think that some form of consequences should also be included.
That would be now follow down to the ordinances and the process that we'll go over.
That's all I want, is for someone to have the discussion, someone to look into it and possibly do something for some of these people that are losing their feed for their livestock.
I'd also like Dave involved in that discussion.
Exactly.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Thank you for at least discussing it, considering it, looking at it. And I hope something can be done because I see no reason why there wouldn't be.
All right, the next item I have for consideration is an application for a liquor license for the Pine Lake Country Club. That would be effective July seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and it would expire on July sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the fiscal year twenty twenty-two fuel bids. Angela did.
Yes.
You've got one. Okay, I didn't know. This will be on file in the auditor's office. So I've got a bid proposal for Gasohall by the Tank Wagon eighty-seven Octane E ten at point zero seven eight cents. Diesel fuel number one, Diesel X Gold. Now, this is from Growmark Incorporated, point zero eight, point zero seven eight cents. I've got number two, Diesel X Gold, point zero seven eight cents. Propane, point one two nine. Regular blend Gasohall, point zero seven eight, and propane for point one two nine. So having conferred with.
And these are costs over.
Over the current rate, or.
That day's.
That day's market, yeah.
Which is the same as it's been over here.
Yes, sir. And they have included their one thousand dollar guarantee check from AgVantage FS, Waverly, Iowa.
AgVantage FS. Waverly. Bond.
Yeah, just a short evening. So I'd accept a motion to approve the fuel bids.
I will, I got a message from Bruce Deacon. He said if they're, uh, Taylor said to approve it today, if there was only one bid.
And less than ten cents is what I conferred with Taylor, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is a consideration of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations resolution.
I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations resolution.
I will second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Angela?
Renee.
Hi.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is a resolution for interfund operating fund transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for interfund operating transfers.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Hi.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is a resolution for advanced issuance of payments.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for advanced issuance of payments for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Angela?
Renee.
Hi.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Final resolution for budgeting is resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service area.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service area.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Angela?
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the resolution on direct report of misconduct.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution on direct report misconduct.
No, I will second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Angela?
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is a change of status for Lynn Adams, Community Service Director, CICS Director, Coordination Officer.
Do you want Lynn to speak?
Sure. Is Lynn, oh, she's stuck in. Hi, Lynn.
Hi.
Go ahead, Lynn. I'll let you discuss your change of status.
Um, well, whatever requesting is, um, and I did include a, a letter to the board and some information. Uh, but basically, uh, we're currently an eleven county region as the coordination officer for that region, and ninety-five percent of my salary, ninety-five percent of my duties are for the region since we became region. We're expanding as of July one from eleven counties to fifteen counties, so I will have additional duties, um, responsible for those additional four counties. Plus, uh, we'll be taking on additional staff. Um, so I will be supervising, I think I had it there. Uh, as of July first, uh, twenty-one staff, uh, additional force staff with the additional new counties. I know that I've definitely been very busy and I am very busy, um, right now through that transition and will continue to be so. We did not have, hire any additional administrative, um, staff to take, take that up. I know when, I know Russell was here, our CEO, and talked with you guys quite a long time ago about that before we even took on those counties. And I think even at that time, he brought up, or Lance, they brought up the issue and, and he makes this, at that time, there would be kind of an expectation of, of a, you know, compensation for that. It did go to the, uh, BJ's on the employment committee, they brought it to the governing board, there was a, there was a motion, the board approved a recommendation of what I'm asking for. Um, and then there was kind of a clarification at the next meeting. But, and really, I mean, I don't like to come and, you know, do this, but I feel that I am, um, entitled. Even with what I'm asking, I will be a little bit below the average of the administrative team. So it's not like I'm thinking I need to be the best paid of the administrative team. I'm just asking for an average. I mean, if, if, you know, if we, if you stay with what you approved previously, I mean, I'll be the lowest paid person, yet I have the most seniority. I supervise the most staff on the administrative team and, um, will be taking on all those additional duties as of tomorrow.
I'm, I wanna comment, so not, I don't wanna conduct a performance review here, but I can tell you, um, Lynn's job is difficult. Lynn's job is far encompassing. Geographically, it's here to there. The, the, my concerns don't involve Lynn's performance. My concerns involve the fact that we don't have a ceiling for anybody in these positions. And that bothers me, and, um, I had a county supervisor yesterday say that, you know, there's regional staff that make more than their county attorney. Now, I'm not discounting the fact that, you know, uh, any of our regional staff's education is below that of a, an attorney. But I think all things need to be relative, and so, um, the dollar amount being proposed today I, I think is excessive, not because it's Lynn, it's because I think the ninety-six thousand dollar salary is excessive. So I'll leave it there, and if my colleagues wanna have anything else to say, they can definitely have their say.
I, I mean, I definitely agree with what you just said. I mean, not reflective on Lynn. And I know when you said, I don't, it was a high percentage of the funds are, come from the region, are regional funds.
It's all regional funds.
And where did the, where does the region get their funding?
Well, as of next year, it'll be all state funding, because the law passed that, I mean, you don't, if you don't approve this, it's not gonna have one impact on tax amount that you've levied, it's not gonna have, um, the only thing it's gonna do is say to me that I'm not worth what the other administrative team people are worth. Because you can deny mine, but those other people are gonna get theirs. And, and so, you know, if you're good with me being the lowest paid person for the job I'm gonna do and the additional duties, I mean. And you need to look at it, how many professional, I mean, where all professionals work for the county? But you compared it to the county attorney, and the county attorney doesn't need, he needs a degree, he has to be a lawyer. Who else that works for the county has to have a degree? The engineer and myself. Is there anybody else?
Right. No, I, I'm not arguing.
So I think you need to quit looking at it as just all of a sudden somebody's way overpaid because, you know, I mean, it needs to. And, and who else covers, I mean, what other county position covers fifteen counties?
I look at the entire system of this, when I look at it, I believe you should be a regional employee.
Well, and there's work on that, but that's not gonna happen for a year or two, so.
But that doesn't have to be the case either, I mean.
But, um, what was it, five, six years ago, it was six, seven years ago, when we became the region? They talked about the stair stepping of the balance, exactly what you just said. We balanced you then. We balanced you again, about every other year, we keep rebalancing, that commission comes back with recommendations to these salaries. Uh, Russell's was a twenty thousand dollar increase, yours is a close to a ten thousand dollar increase. Every other year, these large increases keep coming in from the recommendation, and you're being accountable by the recommendations that other boards are doing. I'm, I'm not saying you're worth less, I'm really not. But it's hard to give the raises, because all it is, is a system of stair stepping raises that we seek.
Well, there is a, I mean, there is a matrix and, and, and so there is a matrix in place, the governing board adopted. You guys have followed it up until this year with, even with my staff, this year you cut back on that because they increased the step amount, two and a half, you cut it back to two percent for my staff, too, which I'm not sure why. I mean, we, we've used their system for these past several years, and there is a, there is a ring, there is a scale for the admin team. So, um, in place, so, I mean, the governing board, I think, voted unanimously to adjust that scale, and if they didn't think we were worth it, why did they approve? I mean, I'm not at the top of that scale.
I guess as far as my comparison, the one, um, I compared to is the, this request, which would then put you over what the sheriff gets paid. Do you step out of your door every day and with the thought that you might not step back into the door? I mean, there's, there's different, there's.
I don't wanna get into comparing myself with other, with the sheriff, because the sheriff does a great job and I don't know.
And he also needs.
I, I know who I should be compared to.
Education, training.
Five people on that administrative team, and there's a whole, I mean, BJ has seen the information that Russell did an extensive survey of all the regions to come up with this recommendation, and there is, um, he's got data that shows we're still, for our region, even though you think maybe we're paid too high, we're still lower than all but one or two of the other regions in our administrative cost. So.
Or are the other regions paid too high?
Right. I mean, I have no control over what they're.
Right, no, we're not, but to keep up with everybody else doesn't make sense. And the other regional staff, I can't control what Warren County or Story County or Hamilton County or Franklin County do. But, go ahead, Donna.
Um, that's not what you said about other people. Other people say, you've said, well, we have to stay comparable with other counties so we don't lose our good employees.
Right.
I mean, those were your words.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't that be the same situation here? I mean, personally, in the state of Iowa, in a, in a small population county, I often wonder why anybody should be making a hundred thousand dollars. But if you want, if you're gonna say you want to stay comparable, then that shouldn't, shouldn't that be an across-the-board opinion? Not, we wanna stay comparable with this one, but not that one.
Sure.
And I'm strictly playing devil's advocate here. I'm not saying you need to give him this raise. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
So, but when we say comparable, the cost of living for his counterpart in Story County could be more than it is in Harden County, or his counterpart in Hamilton County could be more. But when you have all these counties and then you have a couple of people, you know, telling you what you're going to pay, what you, Donna, are going to suggest to pay somebody? Do you want somebody in Jasper County and Paushe County telling you what you have to pay?
Well, it kinda sounds to me like that that's what you're doing with other positions.
Well, what we did.
Whether.
You're, you're comparing it to other counties and saying, we have to keep up with them.
We can, when we compare ours or ours, um, elected officials, to me, when I make those comparisons, I compare with like-sized counties. Like the five more populous, five less populous counties.
They do that.
And when we cut the other salary requests back to two percent, we did that because that's what we gave our employees. The majority of our employees. And like BJ suggested, I don't compare to Johnson County, Lynn County, Polk County, Mason City.
No, you compare to like counties, so do that.
The county lines don't really mean anything in regional.
Not in regions.
We have four hundred and some thousand people in our region, so should we be compared to Polk County? Because we're a lot bigger than Polk County here.
But somebody, uh, and, and Donna, somebody in Paushe County at the Monizuma Court, the courthouse in Monizuma has the same vote as somebody does at the Franklin County courthouse as I do. Uh, to approve these wages and, or recommendations on the wages and things. So that's why, you know, my big push as incoming chair is going to be work with our HR attorneys across the board in all these counties and get regional employees, you know, created sooner than later. Because then everybody's on the equal playing field, because Lynn's counterpart in Story County, their insurance is completely different. They have a health savings account where, Lance, how much are they giving? The Story County, uh, health savings account is a huge lump of money, but we're.
We all have different programs.
Yeah. Yeah. So trying to find the best of both worlds and Lynn's counterpart in Warren County may accrue vacation at a better rate than Lynn does. Or Lynn may have lower copay for chiropractor adjustment than his counterpart in Hamilton County. That's why we, I believe, we need to have the regional employees and, and get everybody on a level playing field. And where, if you're going to have large salaries, let the regional people make that decision. Don't send it back to the boards of supervisors. Pauline?
Okay, but now, what do you guys make according to him, his salary? And you guys are just part-time, where he's full-time and probably works over full-time hours. And yet you got pay in
I agree, but I'm not, I'm not comparing myself
But I mean, stop and think about that. What are, what are your salaries?
Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, and you just work part-time.
Right. So full-time for him should be seven, so he should be 74 then, correct then? If he's full-time.
I guess, I guess I just, I hate this, you guys trying to compare.
Right.
That's not what I was saying.
It's not county, we're not just a department of Hardin County. We are, we've turned into a regional operation, but we're still being treated like we're a county. And I agree with you BJ, there needs to be changes, but those changes aren't going to happen per year or two. And, I mean, you sit on that board and you guys sit there and to me, when you approve that pay matrix, that was the purpose of that was to give guidance.
And there's a lot
You guys aren't even following the guidance.
Right, and I, and
But you lost the train of thought here. And how
I don't think I have. Because if you're saying I'm part-time for 37, somebody's full-time should be 74.
Well, I
I, I'm, hold on, I'm just
I offered just, I, I think you guys, you know, you, I don't want this to become a whole big thing that includes everybody. So I guess I, you know where I'm at, you know what, what, what I, what my request is. You know, if you can't give me the, the amount that I, that I've asked for, if you could at least make me so I'm not the lowest on the scale, I would appreciate it. Being that I do have the most seniority, that I do have the most supervision staff. That I now have responsibility for four new counties and will have 15 counties service coordinators under my jurisdiction. I mean, I would ask that you approve the full amount, but if you can't do the full amount, could you at least do something to recognize that so that I'm not the lowest?
And that's what I'm saying. You only have one county. How many counties does he have?
I understand, but our jobs are not
You gotta take that into consideration.
And I respect your request. I mean, I, I do respect the request. The problem is, I, I'm back to, it needs to be a re, a regional request and a regional setting. If they want to continue to leave this in the counties, then at some point, I have to be here. And, and it's nothing, truly nothing against you. But they need to focus, your coordinators need to focus. I know it's 95%, Russell's 100% paid by the county. They can give him all the raises in the world, be happy. Because it doesn't cost him a penny. But it does on the backside of it, when you talk about liability and employment of the employee.
I mean, it's not county dollars, even if it's levied, it's regional money.
But it's still, it's still the concept of this board giving that raise. That's, you guys are giving it, I'm trying to
Reassure you that That shouldn't be the concept because it is now, it is regional money. As of next year, it'll all be state funding. So you guys can
And I want you to be a regional employee.
Not giving me anything.
And, and I want it to turn to
You're not going to change anything with the region. I mean, there's a regional board that's in control and BJ sits on that board and he has voted for everything that I've talked about, the matrix changes, everything else. And then you sit here and say, I'm not worth what the other administrative team is worth. Yet, you know, it just doesn't make sense, but it's, it's your decision and so.
It's kind of like you're slapping him in the face, I feel.
I don't, you know, Pauline, I don't believe you have the insight, the history.
I have insight. I have
Pauline, I'm going to ask you how many regional mental health board meetings have you been to? Nope, nope, I'm asking for a quantitative answer. How many have you been to?
I've been, I've been to zero.
Okay, that's all I, okay.
Know what
I'm going to go ahead and
Goes through with, when I used to work with stepping stones, I know what Lynn did and the work that he did.
I'm going to go ahead and deviate a little bit from typical Roberts rules. At this point, I'm, like to make a motion to approve the salary adjustment to $91,000 for Lynn Adams as community service coordinator for CICS.
Where would that put him at? He's currently at?
Yeah, he's currently at 86 and it's kind of just meeting in the middle at this point. And I can't say, and the other thing, when we get to discussion, I, I have additional comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion of second, discussion. Lynn, you have my word that I think there are so, there are some buyer's remorse within the region that we went to this extreme. Come July, I'll be the chair of the board. I'm going to add to the agenda that I want to bring up the fact that we need to move on the regionalization sooner than later. Find an employer of record that you may have to give up a little bit of vacation accrual percentage to, and somebody in Story County may have to give up a little quality of health insurance. But I talked to Mike Galloway when he was in town the other day and he agreed. He works with almost all these counties. This regionalization and employer of record issue could be resolved within months, not years. And so it's just a matter of, we've got to put our nose to the grindstone and get this taken care of. And allow that process to bring equity. I don't like the word fairness, but equity to those things. And let the region do their job.
Let them make the jumps in the pay that are necessary.
I don't want you to be the lowest paid. I, I have, I, I have the utmost confidence in you.
And I sit in your position, I can
I, I know
12 years and I faced some of those same type things. And I know it puts you guys in a tough position, but I just felt like if I don't advocate for myself and what I think I
Yeah.
And if the others were, if I was at the top, or if I was even in the middle, I wouldn't even have been here today, but I just didn't feel like it was
Nope.
Appropriate that I should be.
And I applaud you for being here to advocate for yourself. And I applaud, you know, Treasure Ike Meyer's here, she's got change of statuses as well. We, we, we're doing better at being able to come out and, and make justifications. So I think meeting in the middle and I think having the discussion without worrying about what the CEO thinks and letting our board make the decisions rather than the management. And I think pressing ahead for regional employees is, is going to help solve this. But for today, I think I, I'm willing to come to the compromise. And if we can talk about this more at the region and I can bring back more information to Lance or Renee, we can make another adjustment if need be. But for today, I think meeting in the middle is a good start. And it isn't a slap in your face because I'll, I'll make it publicly known that you've been very good at your job, even with my family. It's been a few years, but you and your office were good to my family. That doesn't mean you deserve anything more or less, but I can tell you from firsthand experience, Lynn is good at his job.
I think.
And the assertion that it's a slap in his face and you telling me that, Pauline, I don't appreciate it. I really don't.
Well, it's just, I know.
I know, but you don't know the backstory. You don't go to the public meetings like I do. Lynn knows he can pick up the phone. We've talked about very uncomfortable, difficult things.
I have talked, I've talked
Right.
And Lynn and I have worked together with Mid-Iowa Stepping Stones.
Right.
So I know, I know what kind of job he does. And he does one heck
Okay.
Of a good job.
So at this time, I have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call for the vote. Angela?
BJ.
Aye.
Renee. Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item I have, I have change of status at the sheriff's office. I have two, one for Eric Knott, he's been discharged. Administrative only, hasn't worked for five months. I saw Eric recently. He's taken a security position with another company. I think he's got a promising career. Appreciate his time and service. Official discharge date, 6/23/21.
Make motion to approve, approve the employee change of status for Eric Knott, effective June 23, 21.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is a change of status, a discharge is for Max Chapman. Part-time correction officer is not available to work part-time hours any longer. Effective June 23.
Motion to approve the employee change of status for Maxwell Chapman.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Treasure Ike Meyer, I'm, I'll just ask if you have anything to add. I have three, four, change of status for the Hardin County Treasurer's Office, Deanna Poe, Treasurer. This will be effective July 1, salary rate of $54,415. And during our budget discussion meetings, Michelle did ask to move Deanna's salary to 82% of the treasurer's salary.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is a change of status effective July 1, 2021 for Jessica Anne Wright to a salary of $47,116. Again, per our discussion at budget meeting, moving Jessica to 71% of the treasurer's salary.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm wrong, I had five, not to scare you, okay. Okay. Next I have effective July 1, Kristy Jo Hoffmeister, Treasurer's Office, hourly rate of $20.42 an hour. Again, Michelle discusses at our budget workshop.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is July 1, 2021, change of status for Sherri Simons in the Treasurer's Office to a salary of $47,116. Again, this is discussed to move Sherri to 71% of the treasurer's salary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? When we say that 71%, that's per Iowa code and the administrative rules of what can and can't be done. There's a range there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Final one is change of status effective July 1, 2021 for Michelle Harkin at a rate of 1974 an hour. Again, Michelle discusses at our annual budget meeting.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, other business, Lance?
No.
Renee?
Yep.
And I have nothing, I can ask for adjournment or recess?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.